This is the work session of the MARTA Board of Directors for August 12th, 2021. Please sign in. I'm trying. Sorry, technical difficulties. May I have a motion for the approval of the July 15th, 2021 work session minutes?
I move to approve.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. Approval of the minutes of the July 15th, 2021 work session minutes are approved. At this time, the chair's report, the, on the agenda, the one thing that I'd like to say is that we have some exciting news in Georgia in regards to transportation. Georgia is one of eight states that will be receiving funds based upon the National Transportation Bill, and I am very excited because I feel that we will be able to do some great things, no state, no city progresses without mass transit. And so I expect MARTA to be forthcoming and at the top of the map what we'll do with the passing of the Transportation and the Infrastructure Bill. At this time, I defer to our GM and CEO, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'm going to ask Rob Goodwin to come up, and as he's coming up, I do want to give a little briefing about a couple of items. One is, have a little good news announcement to make. George Wright is here in the audience, I'm putting George on the spot right now, so. George is, I think you all know, is our Chief of Rail Operations, and what, what George doesn't know is that he was accepted into the, the apta, the apta class for the management program that they have. And so I wanted to recognize George. This is a highly competitive program, it lasts a year. George will be able to enter into a class of about 20 people from transit agencies and, and private companies around the country. He will be going to a variety of the conferences, apta conferences, starting in, in October or November is, whenever the, the annual conference is. Meeting first with his group, they'll have a bunch of virtual sessions over the year, go to a variety of meetings, and George and a small group of his cohorts will be working on a, on a presentation that they'll be giving to apta members at the following annual convention. So really excited for George and the opportunity that it places and, great job, George, you're a tremendous asset, and I think, I think the recognition of, of apta by selecting you for this program is well deserved, so congratulations. We've had a lot of conversation about COVID-19 and dealing with all sorts of issues on that. We've had a series of really productive and good conversations with the board about numbers of people vaccinated, and Rob Goodwin and his team have done some extensive surveying to better understand where, where our employees are, and a whole variety of issues around our employees' perceptions of vaccination. So I'm going to ask Rob to take us through the presentation, and, and we'll have an opportunity to ask Rob questions, and then when, when Rob is done, I'll, I will work to summarize some next steps that we have in order to make sure that, you know, we're dramatically increasing the vaccination rates of our employees to make sure that our employees, our customers, and the families of our employees are, are kept safe. So, go ahead, Rob.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parker, Madam Chair, members of the MARTA Board. Good afternoon. Again, my name is Rob Goodwin, I'm the AGM of Research and Analysis here at MARTA, and our mission is to turn data into information to help MARTA make better decisions. So to that point, I'm going to be giving you an update on our efforts to track our, our vaccination rate, our COVID-19 vaccination rate, and of course, this information is helpful to MARTA, not only for planning and maintaining a, a safe and healthy workforce, but also it satisfies, we use it to satisfy some FDA reporting requirements as well. Next slide, please. So, so far, we've used three independent methodologies for tracking our vaccination rate. Back in April, we started by producing a online form and having, and asking our employees to voluntarily register when they've been fully vaccinated using that online form. Then in May, we started using data from MARTA's health insurance providers on the number of employees that have been vaccinated, and then most recently, in July, we conducted a survey, an employee survey, where we sent staff out into the field where people are assigned to work, and, and, which was headquarters, the bus garages, rail yards, and stations. And we asked them to fill out a card, it was a very simple question. The question is, have you received at least one dose of a COVID-19 vaccine? And the possible responses were yes, no, prefer not to respond. If they said yes, we, we further asked them if they had used this online form that we had put out there, and if not, why not? And if they, if they said they hadn't been vaccinated, we asked them why not, and what possibly could motivate them to get vaccinated. So over the next few slides, what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you the results of these three methodologies, talk about some of the pluses and minuses of each methodology, and then I'm going to wrap up with some of the feedback we got on why, at least what our, our employees said, why they're not getting vaccinated, and what maybe we could do to encourage them, to motivate them to get vaccinated. Next slide, please. All right, cutting of the chase. So this is the results for the three different methodologies, you can see there are big differences between them. If you start on the left with the online form, and it's just 16%, clearly the challenge with this approach is it requires our employees to take action, right? They've got to get online, either on a computer or smartphone, go to the site, put in their information, it's voluntary. So that's clearly under-reporting. Second, in the middle, using insurance data, and it's insurance data plus some additional information we have. Early on, and, and when the rollout of the vaccine came, as you recall, the priority was for frontline employees, and so we had, MARTA had scheduled a number of frontline employees to get vaccinated at Mercedes-Benz Stadium, so we included that in this group as well. The advantage to this, now it's not self-reported, so employees don't have to take action. The disadvantage to this is, I don't know what your experience was, but my experience, my second vaccine, where I got it, I didn't have to provide my insurance information. So, you know, my insurance carrier has no idea I got vaccinated, I got the second dose. So I'm sure we're missing a fair amount of data from that second methodology. And then the third is the, the July employee survey, which also is not, doesn't require, didn't require action on the part of employees. We went to them, we asked them, they didn't have to come to us. So that's an advantage, and it, it likely also included those employees who, like me, didn't have to give their insurance information, so it, it covered that. And then we actually surveyed over 1,200 employees, which is about a quarter of our workforce. So it was a really robust sample size. So that's, that's on the plus side, but it also has some challenges. We, to the best of our ability, we tried to make it a random sample, but it wasn't completely random, so there could be some biases in the results as a consequence. We didn't include employees at office facilities, we tried to get to all the big ones, but we couldn't get everywhere, so we didn't get everybody, we didn't get a sample from all the facilities. And then overall, the refusal rate for the survey was quite high. In other words, if we, either people marked "prefer not to respond," which is refusal, basically, or when we offered the card to them, they said, "I don't want to, I don't want to take it." So that, that refusal rate, which you'll see in a second, creates uncertainties in the final results, which I'm going to discuss next. Next slide, please. Okay, so on the left here, the, the bar chart shows you the summary of the results of the survey for all 1,200-plus surveys combined. So 55% of the responses were, yeah, I've had at least one dose, 22% were, I didn't, I have not been vaccinated at all, and then 23% declined to respond. So the, the challenge with that 23% is, we don't know, A, we don't know why they didn't want to respond, but more importantly, we don't know the vaccination status of that group, right? Did it skew one way or any other? And depending on, if it did skew one way or the other, that would impact our overall results. So the table on the right, well, actually, the table on the right shows how the, the refusal rate varied by location. So at headquarters, for example, the refusal rate was quite low, at 14%. We went out into the, the garages in the field, that refusal rate went, was, was quite a bit higher, with an overall refusal rate of 23%. If you go to the next slide, please, now I'm going to talk about the impact of the refusal rate on, on the results. So on the left, the chart is basically the same chart you just saw in blue, but what we've added in, in gold is what the results would look like when you either exclude the non-responses, or if you assume that for those people that refused response, the, the distribution of vaccinated and unvaccinated was the same as the people who did respond. That's how you come up with 71% vaccinated, 29% unvaccinated. However, as we said, as I just said, we don't know, right? And so what the, the table on the right attempts to do is give some different scenarios. For example, at the top, if we assume that of the people who didn't respond, none of them were vaccinated, that would drop our overall vaccination rate down to 55%. On the other extreme, at the bottom, if we assume that everyone who didn't respond was vaccinated, it would boost us up to 78%. Now, the reality is, is somewhere in between, right? And so we feel pretty confident that, that our actual vaccination rate is somewhere between 55% and at least 71%, depending on, you know, if, if you think that people who don't respond are more or less likely, likely to be vaccinated. Next slide, please. The other thing we did is dug down into the details, as I mentioned, we went out to a number of facilities, so this, this was anonymous, we didn't keep track of who responded, but we could keep track of where they were, you know, at the different garages, for example. So we dug in to see, are there locations where, in, at MARTA, where we might need to work a little harder to get the vaccination rate up? And what we found is, there was a statistically significant difference in the vaccination rate, or self-reported vaccination rate, between headquarters and basically all the other locations out in the field, except for rail facilities, which was similar to headquarters. There's about a 20%, 20 percentage point gap between headquarters and those other facilities. Next slide, please. And then finally, as I mentioned, we asked for those who said they had not been vaccinated, you know, why, and more than half, a little bit more than half, said that they were, didn't trust the efficacy or the safety of the vaccine. And then furthermore, you know, well, so what could be done to motivate them? Kind of discouragingly, 85% either didn't provide any response, or said there's nothing that could be done to motivate them to get vaccinated. Next slide. So, in conclusion, key takeaways here. We feel confident that the lower bound vaccination rate for our MARTA workforce is 55%, it's likely higher than that, maybe closer to 71%. And it was, you know, the third method, the survey was by far the best way to get at this. The reported vaccination rate for headquarters was significantly higher than all the other, you know, locations out in the field, with the exception of rail facilities. Lack of trust in the vaccine efficacy and safety was the, the main reason why our employees are not getting vaccinated. And then 85% of the unvaccinated employees who responded unfortunately didn't have anything to suggest of how to motivate them to get vaccinated. Next slide. So that concludes my presentation, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Rob, great, great information, and I suspect there's probably some, some questions, Madam Chair, for, for Rob about, you know, what, what, what we understand now better, based on the, the work that your team's done.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I'll ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You say, nothing, there was a certain percentage that said nothing would motivate Do you assume that even loss of job included that? If you, if you, if we, MARTA were to require everybody to have the vaccine, is there still a certain percent? I guess there's still a certain percentage of people that would just refuse to take it, is that?
Yeah, so what we, hindsight's 2020, like, if we could do this over, and maybe we will do it over again, I think what would be a more productive way to ask this question is at least provide some, some, like, if this, would you, you know what I mean? To that point, like, I'm not sure we'd put that on there, but we could, like, you may lose your job if you don't, and then people, oh, they might check that one off, but we don't, because we didn't add, nobody said that, to my knowledge, so, but it's, you know, again, good question.
Is MARTA, still, is MARTA bound like a, I guess like a government, where you, until the FDA or whoever it is that has to approve this, approves it, we, we can't require it, or? I mean, I'm assuming it's like a school system. A school system can require a student to have all these vaccinations once they're FDA-approved. Is MARTA that way?
I'm deferring to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to put Rob on the spot to answer, answer that question. We, we've had a lot of, you know, conversations about this, I think there's, there's, you know, two, two issues that sort of stand out there. One is, you know, we, we do have a unionized workforce, we would need to, we would need to look at whether or not that's considered, you know, part of working conditions or requirement of vaccinations, and I don't want to say it is or it isn't, but that's something that we would have to consider before we could require that of our unionized workforce. I think on the other side, for the non-unionized workforce is probably, you know, with, with exception, there's, there's some clear, you know, in... We would need to respect some clear reasons why people from medical or, or religious beliefs, you know, wouldn't get, wouldn't get vaccinated. But, but, you know, there probably is a path forward to require it for, clearly for non-unionized representatives. I'm going to talk, when we finish the, when we, when we finish asking Rob questions, and I'm going to jump into what we're doing and where we're trending and what we're hearing from the, you know, from the FDA, so. I don't know, Liz, anything to add to that?
No.
No, okay.
Mr. Ash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, and I say this as a sociology major with love for statistics in my heart, but I'm reminded of Mark Twain's observation here, that the most we know, to any degree of probability, is that somewhere between 40 and 70% of our employees are probably vaccinated, assuming that they are responding honestly and accurately. And while frankly, 70% gives me a whole lot more comfort than 40% does, it's still not what we want it to be, particularly if we're talking about the customer-facing employees, the people who are driving our buses, who are interacting with the public on a daily basis, who are frankly, at probably the highest risk for contracting the, the disease at this point. So, you know, I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate the diligence that went into it. I think ultimately, we have some hard policy questions that we need to resolve, and I won't put you on the spot about those, but I appreciate the presentation, and I look forward to the further discussion.
Yeah, let me just follow up that, and there's a slide, maybe three back, I think, I think the number authority-wide is, we believe, one, go one more, one, one more after that, back up. I think we're believing that it's somewhere between 55 and 71% with, with a relatively high, assuming people are being truthful, which I, which I think, you know, within a relative certainty that they are, because they were given the opportunity to, to not answer. So the 55% is the assumption that all people who refused to answer did not get vaccinated. The 71%, as Rob had said, would assume that, you know, that proportionally to the overall population, you know, we don't, we, we by no means think that 100% of the people who refused were, are vaccinated, so, you know, we're somewhere between 55 and 71%, and I think, Mr. Ash, you made a, probably the most important point here, is that we do know that our frontline employees, based on this survey, are skewed to a lower average in terms of being vaccinated than the folks who work in headquarters, as well as the rail, rail facilities. So, so we do know that, that are, that we are not at 55% for our frontline employees, based on this, this survey information, so.
Right, correct.
Mr. Bryson?
Yeah, Madam Chair. There's a saying that I learned a long time ago, that some people's minds are like concrete, thoroughly mixed and permanently set. We're not going to be able to change those folks' mind, we're going to have to live with those that are just not going to want to do this, all right? Now, with that being said, if their role and their responsibility is on the front line and affecting some other people, I think we have to make some hard decisions about how we're going to deal with that. I don't think any incentive is going to change that, I think there's just going to have to be some, some, some decisions made that's going to have to address it, because this, this is not going to change, that's my thoughts on it.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Mr. Parker mentioned the passing of a bus operator due to COVID. Is that information then transferred to the employee, that an employee has passed away of COVID, or is that not allowed based upon HIPAA? I'm not sure.
Liz?
Liz, based upon the HIPAA laws, is that, because experience also will move the mind, and when he mentioned the passing, it made me think, I know there was a partnership between Morehouse School of Medicine to educate employees.
So, we did not provide specific employee name or information when we were posting the, the data for number of cases contracted, and if anybody had passed away? That is how that is communicated, but not the individual's identity.
So is there a company-wide newsletter or email that will go to all employees? That this information will be provided where we are, as far as vaccinations?
Well, we, you know, we do have, one, in, in terms of the, the number of employees who have contracted and, and fadalities, we do post that on our website, and we've been doing that through to, to make sure we've got awareness and transparency. And then there is a weekly COVID-19 update that would include this information, that Lou Sberro, who happens to be on vacation, sends out, and we'll be including this, this information in that update.
So it goes to the employee's email, or? I know it's on the website, but if you don't access the website, you don't know.
No, the, the COVID-19 update goes to, it's emailed out to everyone, although we recognize that many of our, you know, frontline employees don't regularly check their emails, so we have a system that, you know, operations takes care of, to make sure that that information is posted in all of our work facilities where our frontline employees work.
And then the last meeting, I asked a question about whether or not there was a way to develop a partnership with the organized labor, because I know that sometimes there is a misunderstanding of why you feel that I should get the shot, so has anyone reached out to organized labor to say, can we partner on this issue, to communicate?
Yeah, we, we've had some beginnings of conversations, and, and I was going to go over, when we're done with the, the questions for Rob, kind of, there's a series of things that we're focusing on that includes that. You know, we're, we're, we're actually talking about, is, is there a way to not informally, but informally engage them in, in this effort to get more people vaccinated, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob? All right, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
So, you know, so, so on one hand, you know, the, the number of 55% I think is, is higher than we were tracking, based on the, the information that we knew primarily, you know, previously, the best information was, you know, through the healthcare provider, as Rob had laid out. So, you know, so, so while we have a number that I think is higher than, quite frankly, I had thought, it's clearly not a, a number that's enough, and nothing that we should, you know, consider that, that we're done by any means in terms of our efforts. So I want to kind of talk through, give an update, and also hear some feedback, I'm sure, about what, what we're doing to, to move up the numbers. So, so, you know, I'm not, we've had a lot of discussion in the past about what we've been doing, I won't go into detail with that. Chairwoman Scott mentioned the partnership with Morehouse School of Medicine, that was really about trying to find a, you know, a trusted organization other than MARTA, to our employees to speak to, you know, answer, get, get medical questions answered and all that. You know, we've, we've done that, we've, we have, you know, had some incentives through raffles that, that's been going on, and, you know, a whole variety of efforts. So, but what are we doing now, right? What else are we doing to move this number beyond what we think is a low of, of 55%? One thing that we are initiating and, and just very, very recently started, is we've committed to that all of our new hires were requiring vaccinations, so before a new hire is allowed to begin their, their, their training as a new employee, the NITO training, like you would have to bring your I-N-I-F form to prove that you've got your, you know, citizenship to prove that you can legally work, we will be requiring, you know, proof of vaccination for all of our new employees. And obviously, that's going to, you know, be important, but it's not going to change these numbers dramatically, just by having 100% of our new employee workforce. And all these measures, you know, just, I just will throw out there one more time, there are, you know, legal legitimate reasons for medical conditions and, and religious beliefs that we will always be respectful of, and would waive that where, where it's appropriate. The other most important thing that we see will, you know, will, will have an impact, but I think I want to point to Rob's numbers around that, you know, 85% of our employees who are not vaccinated said, "There's nothing that can change my mind," and I won't repeat what you just said about how concrete is mixed. And I won't repeat what you just said about how concrete is mixed, but, you know, there's a recognition that, that people have strong beliefs around this that are outside of just that they're a MARTA employee. But we do believe an incentive is, is very, very important here because we recognize that we need to continue to take larger steps forward to, to get, you know, virtually all of our employees vaccinated. But those steps are going to be more difficult to do with a larger population of, of unvaccinated. So we are, we have announced for a two-month period of time, and it's began, I think, in the middle of next week, that anyone who gets vaccinated over a two-month period, we're going to give an extra day off, either PTO or vacation day, there's little differences between unionized and non-unionized employees. So we see that as a, a financial incentive for employees to get vaccinated. We are, we're talking, Melissa's leading an effort to really understand how the, how the Federal Transit Administration is reacting to and implementing, I think, you know, President Biden's edict around testing and/or vaccination of employees. They are still largely working remotely and have a, a sequential step to bring people back to work. So they are beginning an effort of trying to understand the status of vaccinations. I think, I think, you know, I think quite frankly, we're a step ahead of them with the work that, that Louz and Rob have done in, in terms of understanding where, where our employees are vaccinated. But a, a very clear next step will be to do some sort of required survey to get those numbers clear. Are we between 55 and 71 percent? I think the, where we're standing now is we want the incentive program to have some results before we, we do that, so we can start to measure, measure the change, because I think it's very important for us to understand how effective is a day, a day off for our employees to get vaccinated. And then, and then, you know, the next thing will be is, you know, we are going to continue to, you know, think through the, the ultimate long-term implementation of having some requirement done. You know, my sense is, is that, that through the FTA, we will probably be mandated that at some point. And so pieces of this are preparing, trying to get as many of our employees vaccinated through encouragement, through incentives, like we're talking about, and, and then work on, you know, implementing some sort of requirement that's, you know, appropriate, legal, as well as, you know, in concert with our collective bargaining agreement. And then the other thing, I've had a conversation with, with Britt about, about, Britt Dunn, the ATU president, you know, about engaging them informally, and, and they're very supportive of that. The, the, the international president recently sent out a letter to all transit agencies that sort of articulated things that he would like to see done by transit agencies across the country before any sort of mandates were done, and largely, all of those are, mostly all of those are implemented here at MARTA. And the next step, in order to, to really see if there's some way of having a much more formal program with the local ATU to, to have them actually take on some, some actions that are independent of us to encourage vaccinations. Because we, because I, you know, I believe, and as, as we talked through this with staff, that, that, you know, removing the incentive and getting people other than your employer to encourage you to vac, to be vaccinated is also a, a potential, you know, way. And I think that, you know, looking for that trusted individual, and clearly, you know, that's a role that, that a union plays in a workplace, that, you know, they're to represent the, you know, the needs and the good of, of their employees that they represent. And so I think some sort of forum, and we'll be having conversations with the ATU about what, what they could do, what they're comfortable with doing, and, and how we would work with them to get that done. So. So, you know, summary of, of, of a lot of actions that are ultimately aimed at getting us, you know, substantially higher numbers, and, and then preparing us for either a, a decision to require vaccinations here across the board, or, you know, or the potential of being, having that imposed upon us. So.
Jeff, on that point, do we know if ATU has surveyed their own employees? Going back to what you were saying about the trust, and just to get a better feel, maybe they're more open to responding, again, at the union level?
Yeah, they, they have not, but I think that's part of what we want to talk to them about, is, you know, having them be part of potentially collecting information. So.
I have a question. Well, maybe question slash comment. So I'm, I'm one of those people who truly believes that the numbers will go up once the FDA gives its full approval. But my question is, in terms of requiring new hires to be vaccinated, are there any legal ramifications to that?
Did you say legal ramifications?
Yeah.
You know, there are some, we, you know, I mean, we've considered the, the legal ramifications. We, you know, we believe that strongly, that with the exception of the, you know, the religious or medical, you know, issues that, that may prevent someone from being vaccinated, that, that we can require our new employees to be vaccinated.
Jeff, I heard Chris mention earlier about the medical, charges for the medical policy or, or health insurance. And I think Freedom might have mentioned that last time we heard her mention about the possibility of charging people that refuse to be vaccinated more for health insurance.
Yeah.
Is that, is that something you all are considering or talking about? Or is that allowed? Or, I mean, like a smoker, you know, that might get charged more?
Right. So, so we're, you know, we're, we're talking about that as, as, you know, in, in that case, a disincentive not to be, to be not vaccinated. Clearly, something that we could do, make a decision to make for our non-represented employees very easily, it is a condition that's set forward, and the rate is part of our collective bargaining agreement. So that would, I think, likely require a negotiation with, with the union around that, a change like that to, to the contract.
That's probably where it's due.
Yes, absolutely, it absolutely is.
So, let me start by saying that I think the idea of engaging ATU, I mean, I assume there have been some discussions already, but I, I hope that there are more. We discussed this. I would be fully supportive of, and further incentives, including incentives for all employees or all of certain pots of employees, if thresholds are hit in terms of rates of vaccination. Because I believe we want to have a workforce that wants to have the vaccine. I don't want to get to a place where we're having to force people to choose between vaccination and employment. And I recognize that there are, there are at least some legitimate reasons to be concerned about the vaccine. I mean, I think the science on it is clear, but I understand that people, you know, have different views on that. So what we can do with the ATU to increase the ATU memberships, adoption uptake of the vaccine, I think is important. But I also believe that we need to be having a conversation now about what we will be doing two months from now, if we are not hitting sufficient targets. And I'm not saying 100 percent, but something better than where we are. Because I don't want to have a conversation in October about what we're going to require in December. With all due respect, I think if we have a conversation now about whether by October 1, it is our requirement, August and September will go differently than they will if we wait until October to have that conversation. I, we are, we sit in a unique place, because we sit as fiduciaries, and we sit in a, in a public safety space, where both for our employees and their family members, we have responsibility to set rules to help keep them safe. But we also have responsibilities to set rules to help keep the public who travels on our system safe. And, and I want to see us focus on that. We don't have any doubt, I assume, and I'm careful not to offer legal advice to the authority, that we can require employees to wear masks, to wear face coverings. We also have the right to ask and insist that our employees take other public safety measures. Without getting into this, I feel strongly that we need to be having the conversation now about what we will do if the increased carrots don't produce the result that we're insisting on. I'm not saying that deadline has to be tomorrow, I'm not saying that deadline has to be Labor Day. But we need to have a deadline. Otherwise, you know, we, we saw the number, 51 percent say there's nothing we can do. And another 30 percent say, would, they refuse to give any reason why they would choose. We should engage, we should, we should do everything we can to persuade, but simultaneously, we should be having a conversation, we should make a decision about what we will do if that does not work.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we are having those conversations about, about that. You know, part of it will be a, a negotiation with, with the union, above and beyond what they can do to, to increase those numbers, and, and hear the board loud and clear about the need to have some very clear goals of, of, you know, people getting vaccinated, and a plan to deal with, you know, if those goals aren't met, because this is, you know, this is an important public health issue that, that we are going to do everything we can to, to improve.
Madam Chair. I also think that it's, it's wise for us to, you know, kind of going, going off of what Mr. Ash just said, it's wise of us to make a plan, because I think the chips are about to start falling. We, it was just announced today that government employees at HHS and VA are going to be the first government employees that, that receive a mandate to get the vaccine. So if the numbers continue to go up the way we are seeing them here and nationwide, I think the choice is going to be made for us. But I would like to be leading that discussion early and not playing catch-up.
All right. Unless there are any more questions, that, that really concludes the discussion about where we are with vaccinations, and we will continue to, you know, update the board, not only at the, at these work sessions, but at other times, as well as the numbers change, and we continue to, you know, make plans to, to move to where we want to go. The next and final presentation that we want to take through, take you through is, Manjeet Renew is going to provide a, really a presentation around focusing on the federal funding, around mostly the competitive programs, as, as chairwoman, the chairwoman had mentioned earlier, we have great opportunities to capture federal funds. We have, you know, two jurisdictions, the city of Atlanta and Clayton County, that we have funds to invest in. And I thought it was important to, to really give some education to the board members about what these programs are, and some information about where, you know, the legislation, where we believe the legislation is headed. As I think folks recognize, the Senate has passed a bill, the House is not likely to, you know, to, to end up in, in some sort of a, a conference committee when the House acts on that. So, Manjeet?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Good afternoon, directors. Happy to be here to talk about this important program that MARTA is going to be embarking upon. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So just to provide a little overview of the capital investment grant program, that's administered by the Federal Transit Administration. MARTA's expansion program is typically, typically going to involve the new starts program and small starts. New starts is for fixed guideways that are the large ones. So under current rules, they're in excess of $300 million for those projects. For small starts, those are less than $300 million under, under current rules for fixed guideway as well. And that can involve rail, as well as bus rapid transit with a significant component of fixed guideway. So those are the, the two funding programs within CIG that would be typically the ones that we'd be looking at here at MARTA for the, the MARTA 2040 program. Additionally, there's an existing program that came about a few years ago called the Expedited Project Delivery Funding Program. That involves a component of private sector participation, as well as innovation. So that's another one that we will take a look at, to see if we have projects that are a good fit for it. The, the one limitation there is the federal share is limited to 25 percent, so there's a more significant local participation. For everything that we do in the CIG program, it's a multi-year process with a, a number of, of steps. So it does take time, and it takes, also requires that we need to be thinking ahead and taking actions now to get to a point several years where, down the road, where we are in a position to get a grant award. The eligibility for entering into one of these programs is based on, on the project features, and also its competitiveness through a ratings program. And I'll talk, uh, ratings criteria, and I'll talk about that in a little bit later here in the presentation. There are local commitments that are required, so funding share is an important part of that on the local level. So the way the, the law is written now, the, the federal share can be up to 80 percent, and with some of the rules, it's, it's 60 percent. In practice, the policy, however, has been for 50 percent federal share, and urging that the local commitment on funding be higher than that. And again, this is a discretionary program, is therefore competitive, and, and that has been FTA's policy for some time. Now with the current administration, we are hopeful that the federal share commitment will increase to reflect the statutory allowance for these programs, and time will tell if that will be the case. So we are assuming conservatively at the moment, and watching carefully the, the landscape with the current administration. Other requirements are that as a region, we're on the same page, where we want to invest local and federal dollars. So that involves the, our Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the Atlanta Regional Commission, or ARC, as well as the Atlanta Transit Link, Mr. Thompson, glad to have you here, that we are working together as a region on the same page, and, and taking actions to reflect these commitments in the local planning documents. Another key part of our, our commitment is that, that we are ready, that we're consistent, and that we provide quality materials to FTA as the oversight and administrative agency. So there are a lot of federal requirements that come into play as we seek to voluntarily engage with federal funding programs. Environmental review is one, the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, so achieving the, the correct level of environmental documentation. the, the correct level of environmental documentation, those documents are prepared by MARTA, but FTA is the lead agency and responsible for taking action on those. Additionally, there's a, there's a greater cost, there are Buy America provisions as well as prevailing wages that need to be paid for participating in the federal program. The, as been mentioned earlier, there's a transportation reauthorization bill as well as a component of additional infrastructure funding that may result in changes to this program. But one, one key message is that there will be a significant amount of federal oversight and requirements that are involved in engaging in this effort. So go to the next slide, please. So let's talk about those potential changes to the CIG program. So House Resolution 3684 was approved by the House a few months ago, and this week was amended and approved by the Senate and commonly known as the bipartisan infrastructure bill. However, it's just a bill, and it's just a bill on Capitol Hill, so we all remember, I imagine Schoolhouse Rock from a couple decades ago, and it's still in the cultural vernacular today. There are more steps taken in that process and changes are possible and quite likely, so this is reflecting the highlights that we know today. Those highlights are, are some good ones. The funding level is effectively proposed to be doubled for the CIG program, and additionally appropriations will be committed through fiscal, federal fiscal year 2026 instead of having to have those appropriated on an annual basis. So the changes to the program, there aren't a whole lot of substantive changes, but there are some key important proposals here, and one that's really helpful for, for MARTA is to increase the small starts project cap to 400 million and increase the federal share maximum to $150 million. A number of our corridors are kind of on the, on the cusp based on what we know at the planning level of design today, so this would be really helpful if it goes through. And another provision would be for FTA having the ability to waive Buy America requirements for materials that would kick up the cost of the project greater than, than 25%. Another component in the bill is the potential for bundling a number of projects at one time, and based on what MARTA has in the pipeline, that actually could be helpful for us, so we're, we're exploring that, taking a look at it. It would replace a similar provision that's been in CIG for a number of years, was actually pioneered by the Utah Transit Authority for their mega rail program that was built out around the time of the Winter Olympic Games in 2002, which I had the privilege of attending and was really cool. So those are some of the, the key changes that are coming along potentially for CIG. So let's go to the next slide, please. So these are the, the key steps in the process, so what's illustrated up on the screen is for the new starts process, and the first step is, is where we are today with our, with a number of our corridors, which is planning, so, so what is the idea that we want to explore and, and how do we achieve some potential solutions for, to meeting the need of that idea, so looking at mode, looking at alignment, looking at stations and corridors and the like. And the next step in the process is, is when we decided, okay, well, this is, this is the project that we want, there's a locally preferred alternative for federal projects, and then we request entry into project development. That is the moment at which we are actually in the CIG program, that is also when costs that we're expending become eligible for reimbursement through the grant if it's awarded later on. And this is the one difference between new starts and small starts that you see on the screen there. For new starts, because those are big, complicated projects, there's a higher level of scrutiny by FTA on those, you have to get permission to enter into final engineering. For small starts, you do not need to do that. The final step is then the full funding grant agreement for a new starts project or a small starts grant agreement for a small project. What often happens, though, is there's still some i's to dot and t's to cross and a little bit more process is the FTA will issue what is known as a letter of no, of no prejudice, and what that says is at our own risk, we can move forward, and if all goes well with the funding agreement, then the costs we're incurring back to the issuance of the L O N P will be eligible for reimbursement. And his, while the FTA is not committed to issuing the grant agreement, historically FTA has always issued the grant agreement when the L O N P has been issued unless the sponsor has rescinded their request. So we go to the next slide, please. So these are the rating criteria that FTA considers for CIG projects. So key messages are that the project needs to have merit, so it has to have value and utility, and the other is there has to be bona fide funding commitments, and also that the system that we have today that we're capable of maintaining it and operating it at the right capacity for what we've committed to do in a reliable fashion. As the board knows, we have a substantial budget for our state of good repair program, which will help immensely with that as well. And the two between funding and, and project merit, they're 50/50, and that gets to the blended rating, both have to be a medium rating and ultimately lead to a medium. The, the, the components or the criteria that involve merit deal with things that you would expect, that it has to improve mobility, that it would provide for environmental benefits, air quality is certainly one of them in a region like this, same with congestion, cost effectiveness, so relative to the costs of the project per rider, does it make sense to have that level of investment? So we wouldn't spend $5 billion on a project to move 200 million, or 200 people a day, that would not receive a good rating, that would not be a good project. Economic development is an important component of this too, as well as land use, so integration with transit-oriented development. So those are the key criteria for, for merit that lead to the rating, so not just any old request can get federal dollars, it has to have value for the transportation system. So next slide, please. So let's talk about roles and responsibilities a little bit here. So there, these four groups, staff, partners, you, the Board of Directors, as well as FTA, are all involved in this village of bringing a project to fruition. So for staff, it's, it's doing the technical work, it's going through the process, and it's providing the information that decision makers need to have to make what is ultimately a policy decision. There is no equation that you can draft and then put information into, to come to a decision about what the actual project should be. The staff provides the information to help informed, better policymaking and better decision-making and engagement with the public and stakeholders. For partners, what's meant by partners are other, typically other agencies such as cities and counties and GDOT and other, other agencies that we need to partner with. So MARTA has two roles with this program. One is that we lead, so we are leading the effort to identify a transportation project and to move it through the process and design it and deliver it. Where we partner is in areas, say, on city streets, where we don't own the streets, so we need to work with the jurisdiction on technical matters and coordination, utilities and pavement and other third-party matters are a big part of that coordination. So that's where we involve with partners, and where partners can be most helpful is, is, is coordinating with us carefully on the technical matters, working through their community and stakeholder issues as, as well as being streamlined with us when we're working together to get the permits that we need for entering the right-of-way or for, for utilities, and also being realistic. There's a distinction between project mitigation, so where we're impacting, so if we need to replace the pavement because we're running a BRT on there and the buses are much heavier and the pavement wouldn't handle the buses, then there's an impact there from our bus line. But if a city is asking for the entire cross-section to be reconstructed, that's a betterment, and it may make sense to do that as part of the project, but it's a cost that would be borne by the city, so distinction between mitigating impacts of the project as well as what are betterments that make for an overall good project. So there are, those are the key roles of coordination and moving quickly. For you as the Board of Directors, it's helping facilitate this process and, and making decisions in a timely manner, and also helping to provide resources and engaging with those that you represent from your various districts as well. So you pay, you play a key role in, in getting to a point where we can successfully navigate this process. The FTA is, of course, our funding partner, and they help guide us through this process and provide rigorous review and comments and oversight to help us get to a point where we can have a successful project. Next slide, please. So for next steps, as we embark upon this journey, we are in the process of assembling the resources nationally to support us with this effort. In addition to what we have here locally, which is our, are some great assets with the staff as well as with the consultant community, these consultants have members of their companies that practice nationally that will help us through this process as well, and the intent is I want to have a CIG and discretionary funding programs strategic plan, so it's transparent about what we're doing and, and that it's clear in how it communicates our priorities and how we're going to be pursuing funding through the CIG program. Next would be to identify and get ready of candidate early action projects, so determining which are the ones that are most likely to be successful, which are the ones that we can get going on early here. So our candidate projects that we see as having, that are, would be good early action projects, there's four, two of which have adequate committed local funds, that's the Campbellton Corridor, as well as the Clayton County BRT project. The other two have a gap in committed local funds, so we'd have, to get to a point where we have a sufficient local match, that's the Clifton Corridor that would connect with Emory University as well as the CDC, and potentially the Georgia 400 freeway bus rapid transit. We would then need to make sure that we get ready. That involves synthesizing the input and technical work that we've received to date, and then finalizing to prepare draft LPAs for consideration by the public and stakeholders and this board. With that, then we would conduct readiness reviews to see if we can make the business case that these projects are indeed ready to go forward in this significant commitment, and then we would target federal fiscal year 2024, its federal budget, to demonstrate that we are ready for a grant agreement execution, and the one year from now, what we're ready for to then make the ask, the big ask of the federal government to start funding these projects. We can certainly be entering requests for project development well before then, but in terms of actually being in a point, a place where we are asking for the funding, that's a year from now. There's a lot of work to do between now and a year. So there's, the next slide, about to turn it over to everybody here for questions and discussion. So MARTA hasn't received a grant like, from CIG since 1997. We are a top 10 transit agency, serving a lot of people, and outside of the Philadelphia region, it's the longest route for a big transit agency in the country, and the Philadelphia agency, SEPTA, has submitted a request to entry into, request for entry into project development for its King of Prussia line. So all that's to say is, it is our time. We are due, and we just have to take the work to get there, and doing that, staff will keep the board informed, and we will come back with the draft of the, the CIG and discretionary federal funding strategic plan, and I look forward to working with you on that, so I'll stop there and see if there are any questions or comments, or if Mr. Parker has anything he would like to add.
Nothing to add, but open to entertaining questions?
Yeah, I'll ask, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
Just two questions. In terms of that process, and you're right, it's been a while, quite some time since CIG projects come through, were you, we're listing the MARTA board, these, are you talking about the MARTA board taking action for projects to enter the pipeline, or is that just, like you said, informing? And then maybe, because I know obviously the MARTA board votes at the time of, I guess, the grant applications.
Yes, so at the time to accept the grant application, that, that is one, to keep the board informed as well, and regarding locally preferred alternatives, about what is the project that we want to pursue for the applications.
Yeah, and you know, let me just, just add to that, the, you know, the, the 14th Amendment, the 15th Amendment, as well as the more MARTA prioritization, which were all actions of the board, are that roadmap that we will navigate around projects, so it's, so I don't, don't want anyone to feel like, you know, we're, we're moving projects forward without, you know, the direction of the board, we have that, and now we're advancing those projects.
And then my second and last question was, given the timeline you were talking about, FY24, does that have any impact on those projected project timelines that there are in those amendments?
So for the, the four early action candidate projects, that timeline works well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just to, I mean, this looks to me like one big bottleneck, okay, and everything, and as I was watching that flow chart, I look at that flow chart, I thought, well, can you pick out the points in there where the bottleneck is the worst and, and that we know is going to be the problem? And also, is this, as a board, where we fit into that picture from a standpoint of decisions that the board has to make and dates that that might fall under in order to meet that August '22 deadline? Because I'm, I'm confused, which is not unusual, but I'm confused as to where we actually fit into that process and, and at the November board meeting, we'll need to decide this, or at the, you know, Sep, or the February board meeting. Is there such a possibility of us having a little more of a, a one-page piece of paper that says, here's where you fit into this picture in order to make this date work?
Yes, we're happy to come back with that as part of that CIG and, and federal discretionary funding program strategic plan to lay out that roadmap. That's something I'm working with on the team programmatically to characterize what those, those dates are, so we're happy to come back with that, and I think it'll be helpful for you. The key decision, of course, is the locally preferred alternative for each of these projects, and as Mr. Parker talked about with the prior actions with the 15th Amendment and the ballot measures and the like, there has been action taken by the board. So the short answer is, yes, we will be coming back to give you a roadmap.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just had a question. I know that, that these projects, these CIG projects are going to be moving along, but the, the OPA projects are the ones that gives me pause because I know that that's a part of the 15th Amendment and those projects, and it'd be nice to kind of know where we at on those projects, you know, and, and as we go forward, we've already made some decisions on those projects to be implemented, and we just, it's kind of difficult to see where they're at and missed all the things that is happening, so that's something I like for us to kind of give some focus to, because we want to see those move along for all our jurisdictions so that we can, we can show our, our residents some results, you know, that's, that's what I'd like to see.
Agreed, Director Fireston.
Thank you. Mr. McNair?
Yes.
Thank you, I just want to commend you on a great presentation of the technical work that it takes to be competitive, to be competitive, and I'd like to just remind the board that this is additive. competitive, to be competitive, and I'd like to just remind the board that this is additive, working through this process, and that it's good, and it's great that to have a direction and an expectation to start moving forward now, because if you don't start, we'll continue to be behind. And my other adage and saying is you never catch a fish unless you put a hook in the water. So we've got to get the hook in the water and compete, because it is competitive. And, but as you heard, it's been a long time since MARTA's taken advantage of this opportunity. And based on the chairwoman's first comments about what's going on, and we've heard about the Senate passage and the House working on historic transportation funding, now is the time to be actionable. So this, I commend you and commend Jeff and the team for moving forward now to be ready. Thank you.
Ms. Ash?
I also thought the presentation was excellent, and I appreciate it. I want to flag that one of the things we can do to be ready is not dependent upon the Board of Directors. It's dependent upon our member jurisdictions, because if you recall, two of the projects that are ready to move forward are projects where the local jurisdiction voted to impose additional, to create additional local revenue, significant local revenue. It was Clayton County and then the City of Atlanta. We have discussed additional local revenue sources with some of our other jurisdictions, frankly, ad nauseam at this point. But this is going to be a process in which, if we have cash, we can move forward, and if we don't, we will have regrets. And that point, I respectfully suggest need to be made by the representatives of this board to those people who appointed you to this board, lest you be asked hard questions and your only answer is, it's because you didn't step up.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, yeah, just, you know, really appreciate the, the information. I do want to just identify two projects that, that some may think, oh, we've forgotten about. One is Summer Hill BRT. We already have the funding for that, so the notions that Manjit presented are not relevant, because we're beyond there. And then the other project is the Streetcar Extension East, which we're advancing using local funds. So the competitiveness and going through the small starts or new starts projects are not here, and we continue to, to advance that, that project. And that's, you know, tied to the work that we've hired VHB to do, and, and will be bringing on a firm to do the environmental work. So I don't want, I don't want anyone to walk away from this saying, what about those two projects? Thank you. I'm not going to go, go through it in detail, but we do have on the work session agenda upcoming meetings that include our upcoming board meetings. We do have a series of jurisdictional briefings that begin in Sep, early September, as well as a MAC committee meeting. And then on the second page, we do also have several apta events that I would encourage board members to, to participate in, as well as a virtual meeting with, that Comptia will be holding their annual meeting, will be done virtually this year. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my, my report, and we do have an executive session.
For litigation and real estate?
Yes.
Yes, we're going to call the executive session to order.
Madam Chair, I move that we move into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation and real estate matters.
A second. Any discussion? Please vote.
I don't think I can, but.
You'll need to hold hands.
Yeah, I'm not a reader. I think she's probably just...
Are we ready?
Hey, go sit down.
Go sit down.
The funny games of the property acquisition down there.
Are there any other matters to come before the work session? Hearing none, the work session is adjourned. And at this time, we will call to order the Board of Directors' meeting for August 12, 2021. Will everyone please sign in? Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda for today? Hearing none. Public comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, at this time, we have one public comment by Bryant Sublumsum that was submitted via the voicemail line regarding the Hamilton Road corridor, and that will be supplied to all of you via email and attached to the meeting minutes.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. At this time, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the July 15, 2021 Board of Directors' meeting?
Second.
Will we vote at this time? At this time, the minutes are approved for the July 15, 2021 Board of Directors' minutes. We did not have anyone... We did have one extension. Thank you. I'm looking. Thank you, Mr. McMurray. I hear you always abstain.
Well, there's some reason I don't get to vote, but...
At least not this year. Some years you get to vote, but...
You've got a lot more important vote than the rest of us, so don't worry too much about it.
Don't worry about him voting for this. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll hear the report from our committee chairs, starting with our External Relations Committee. Mr. Ash?
Madam Chair, the External Relations Committee met on Thursday, July 22, 2021, and received the following briefings: A, a briefing on the External Affairs Outreach and Public Engagement Efforts Update; and B, the media impressions from March through June 2021. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Madam Chair, the Audit Committee met on Thursday, July 22, 2021, and approved the following resolution: Resolutions authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of external audit services for MARTA's annual financial audits for fiscal years 2023 to 2027. I request approval of this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote.
At this time, the resolution is approved.
The committee received the following briefings: Internal Audit Activity and Cyber Security. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hardage. At this time, we'll hear from the Planning and Capital Programs Committee. Mr. Floyd?
Yes, ma'am, happy to read this report on behalf of Chairman Pond, who's, I understand, vacationing in England with the Queen and her family, but...
Having fun.
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, July 29, 2021, to approve the following resolutions: Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for Secure 9,000 Access Control System; the resolution authorizing the execution of an encroachment agreement with owners of 715 West Whitehall Street, Southwest, for improvements encroaching on the West End MARTA Station, MARTA Parcel D 4177, Fulton County, Atlanta, Georgia, 30310; resolution authorizing the sale of MARTA fee interest in Zero Main Street at the intersection of Main and Oxford Avenue, MARTA Parcel D 4182, to the City of College Park for redevelopment of 3907 Main Street, Fulton County, College Park, Georgia. Madam Chair, request approval of these three resolutions.
Second.
Thank you. Let us vote at this time for approval of the three named resolutions. The resolutions have passed.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from our Business Management Committee Chair, Mr. Freyson.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, July 29, 2021, and approved the following resolutions: Resolution authorizing award of a contract for the procurement of cyber threat intelligence platform services, IFB, B 48474; item B, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of renewal maintenance support for the Cisco SmartNet devices, IFB, B 47511; a resolution authorizing a single source renewal of the maintenance and support of the Oracle database ERP and ID management licenses, RFP P 27978. I request approval of these resolutions.
Let us vote on the so-read resolutions.
Second.
Second. Let us vote on the so-read resolutions.
Do you want me to...
Let us draw our hands. I apologize, Mr. Worthing.
That's okay.
Last but not least.
That's right.
The resolutions have passed.
The committee received the following briefing: Contracts, Procurement, and Materials. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Freyson. Now to you, Mr. Worthing.
Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, July 29, 2021, and approved the following resolutions: A, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of inspection and maintenance of generator services authority-wide, B 46991; B, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of MARTA Police Department uniforms and equipment, IFB, B 45252A. I request approval of these resolutions.
Second.
Let us vote on the so-read resolutions. The resolutions have passed.
The committee received the following briefing: Technical Training. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Worthing. At this time, are there any other matters to come before the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on the discussion that we had in the work session about vaccination, I hope that at the September meeting, we will have progress to report to celebrate, but I also ask that we put an agenda item on the September agenda to vote on whether what additional policies, if necessary, will be carried out by the authority and when. I'm not asking for a vote today, but I'm asking that we vote in September.
Are there any discussion regarding the comments made by Mr. Ash? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ash. To come before the board. Hearing no other comments, Board of Directors' meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.